I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item, our agenda item number two is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'd like to vote, uh, number five C out of the consent agenda. Anything else? Hearing them, with that change, I would call for those who are there in favor of approving the agenda with that one change. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Hearing. Let's see, public forum, we don't have anybody here from the public, so we'll pass that. Uh, item number four is city announcements. Michelle?
Uh, now the new rates will be effective October fifteenth, and just a reminder to our residents that when you're walking your dogs, please clean up after your dogs. We did receive another email complaint, so we need to make sure we do that.
All right, thank you. Um, item number five is consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Hearing. Let's see, should we, let's pick up the item five C at this point in time, can we?
I'm not familiar with the program. I don't know exactly what it is.
When you were our council last time, they've done it since Tristan was, since the twins were there.
We might have, but that's.
Too long for him to remember. Um, it's just, it's, I think I put something in the packet.
Yeah, there was something in the packet.
Yeah, and they handed out some fifth graders, they presented to the fifth graders and, um, we split the cost with Primark for South of Bryant students.
What is the cost?
Fifty, I believe, and then it's split. Kurt fifty per student, that's then my students in our, and then split with Primark.
An educational program.
It is an educational program. I think we still have some of the stuff that was interesting little box that he got with him.
Well, I think, tell me, explain it to me a little bit more again too, because I remembered hearing about it. Is that why they do those LEDs or not? He does those cameras?
No, it's like, I think with the twins, they got some LED light bulbs.
I think that's what it was.
The shower head?
Yeah.
Shower head?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I got a shower head one time, and why would you come home with this?
Yeah, and then there was interesting, I'm just really, um, surge protector thing, and it, you could shut pharmacy outlets off at one time, and it was great.
Well, you know, I remember it was as little kids, that thing, or probably always when we were in high school, the booklets, power line and stuff.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the M R E S fifth grade program.
I'll make a motion to approve the M R E S fifth grade program.
Second.
Uh, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Questions? Hearing them, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Hearing. Okay, six A, chamber presentation for Fall Festival.
Let's see, I, I haven't seen anybody here that was supposed to be here, um, but, um, so, yeah, they're supposed to have a little packet, but it's just the streets that we're going to have locked up. I did give those to Michelle, um, and you have those, correct?
They're included all of us.
Okay.
I, the only question I had is, I, I went off last year's, and it just says for portion of the afternoon. Do we have it signed?
So, two o'clock, we would like to, um, to have the, the streets closed off, because we need to have enough time for them to clear out, um, but the, the, the good part about that is we're just right here, and so there's not a whole lot of, um, parked cars here, it's because we decided to move it down a block, just so, I mean, you have the people going into J W's and the grocery store, to kind of leave that alone. Um, so then two o'clock right here, and then on, um, Broadway from Main Street until, into Mickley Street.
So, you, so the, the street names are correct, through East Broadway, from Main to Mickley, South Main, from Broadway to City Hall. Right?
Sorry, let me get this. He's.
To City Hall.
So two o'clock to, until when?
I, I would say seven o'clock. We have our food truck open until six thirty, just so we can, um, have enough time. There's gonna be people that linger, but we're pretty good at, um, any other thing torn down right away.
Okay, so then I'll make those notes on our resolution twenty three four dash X X that cross out for a few hours the afternoon, and say, probably two P M to seven P M. So I entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with adding the hours. I guess all the streets are listed, so.
Okay, you want to leave that be resolved?
Okay, be it resolved. Let the council of the city of Pina to approve closing downtown streets noted for from two to seven, the afternoon of Saturday, October twenty sixth of twenty four. Streets will be closed from East Broadway from Main to Mickley, and also from South Main from Broadway to City Hall. Intersection will be have open on Northwest to allow traffic flow to the main, North Main businesses.
All right, so we have a motion. Carol, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions?
We were going to look into doing, I don't know if anybody has heard of the Vine Girl Slushies.
I, okay, they, on the Facebook.
Yes, um, they've gone to a couple different locations or events around this area. They take care of their own liquor license, so we don't have to do that, um, but at this time, they, they're already booked for this, for this weekend, um, that we're doing the Fall Festival, so we don't have to worry about that. But, um, the next one that we would like to have it, then we'll bring, bring that information.
Okay.
Sounds good. And where are they at? Well, they're kind of all over the place, I guess. Yeah, because when I first contacted them, they said that they would, um, get me in contact with someone in my area. Oh, I never, I'm a jerk or something, I, I really don't.
Really don't.
But other people have heard about them. I just seen it on Facebook, I don't know if it's past.
Yeah, and I thought we should give the taste of.
Yeah, there we go.
Can we approve it for a future event? How do you come by?
Yeah, at a meeting, late.
Well, I don't know if this, um, can this be something that is closed for, for every single year in the future too? Is that something that we need to do a resolution on?
Oh, you mean this just up there?
Yeah.
The problem is the dates change.
They do, they do. I didn't know if you could do the streets.
The streets we could probably do the same.
Somebody, she knows.
Probably talk about that a lot there.
We did it for Gemberry.
Yeah, for Gemberry, and still, but then every once in a while, like this now is a little further out, right?
Yeah, so this, well, last year we weren't able to do it because of the weather, but the year before we had it here. And it's just, it's nicer for the, the businesses that are open and just the traffic flow and everything.
Okay, we've got a resolution, and a second, and other questions? And I'm going to vote.
Okay, Danny Workmeister?
Aye.
Deanna Ralph?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Carol Knockoff?
Aye.
Passes with all ayes. All right, thank you. Did you explain it on your old business, and this is, this is just to help us keep track of things, carryover things, and Michelle's also keeping track of carryover items that aren't ready to be dealt with his old business here, which is a pending old business listed as well. But they should all be carryover items. So item number seven A, approve the bid to demolish and clean up the city property at four thirty south to maintenance. I guess technically I would entertain a motion and discuss it. So I entertain a motion to approve the bid to demolish and clean up the city property at four thirty south main.
We've got two bids, don't we?
Yes. Well, that's true. So how do we do that? We're supposed to put a motion for, for selecting, so maybe we discuss the first time.
But we're not selecting the same name?
No, so that's up to them.
That's up to decide, it's just fair.
Well, but we don't need to decide it.
Okay.
Only the council can.
All bad.
Okay, so, so let's discuss the bid to demolish and clean up the city property at four thirty south.
Need a second.
What's that?
Did we hear?
You said, yeah.
Did you make more?
I made demolish.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
If you hadn't been a second.
I'll second.
All right, discussion. Michelle? What information would you like to share with this group before they act on?
We do have an interested party that isn't interested in purchasing a lot. They will, uh, they like to negotiate the price, but they will do the demolition.
Themselves, right, and not asking us to be doing it. I don't think that we can go wrong on that. I mean, then they have it done the way they want it.
You need to be aware that there may be more bidders, it's possible.
Well, then we'll bring you some kind of a dollar a month if they, the next person doesn't say they're gonna, they want us to, but then we're gonna have to try to figure out.
And that's when we would, we would start the process, and we'd have to have, um, a public hearing, and then sort of just can voice their interest in the property.
I think we should start a private public hearing and get that going, and then whoever wants to bid on it, like this one, you know, they'll, they'll pay, um, or they'll pay to demolish that, which we've got our two bids here, so we know about what our price would be, eighteen hundred difference, yeah, that's up to them.
Well, we need the council to put certain conditions on the bids.
Which I think we should, like, um.
To be fair.
Having.
So everybody's bid on the same thing.
Yes, yeah.
So we're not messing with that.
So for the bid, do I hear that the council will list a table, consideration of the bid, and then discuss moving to a public hearing on selling the property potentially as is?
Yes. I mean, it means they've already said what they could do. I don't know.
Well, we gotta give everyone the.
Who's they, that you're referring to?
Just the party, the interested party, and if they're saying, that's what you just said, that they could demolish it themselves.
But regardless, we have to have a open.
Yes, right.
Well, we can have the open, we can have, if I understood this this morning, we can, we can receive that what their, what their offer is, and then we have to open the public hearing, and if anyone is interested.
These sides.
They can decide if they're interested then, and.
Okay, absolutely.
So, so what happened, this is a last, this is we got final ownership of the property, um, and the council, when that happened, was going to have the property cleared as is the owner's responsibility. So you could move ahead with that and say, we're gonna go ahead and demolish the property, and then we can go to a public hearing to sell the property. The, um, the offer or the interest that Michelle says she received is that they're willing to handle the demolishing of the property. So we would have to decide as a city actually, are we willing to wait to demolish the property, that that will be a publication, or setting a public hearing, which we can't do tonight, because this agenda was already finalized. Then at the next meeting, we would authorize a public hearing, then we would publish it, um, have a hearing, and then make decisions after that. So that means that the property probably would be demolished for a month or more. So that's your decision to decide if, if that's okay with you or not. So we can move ahead and demolish it, or we can say we're gonna wait and have a public hearing, since we have had an offer like that, um, and we'll wait and see if the, the offer will include it. Because we haven't received an offer from this interested party that would just receive interest from the other party.
Just a verbal. It's gonna probably be offered, and they back out, I think, on the June, right?
So priority number one is probably, we own it, what should we do, what we, the city owns it, what should the city be doing with it right away, and what should the timeline be against?
I like the idea of, uh, the potential buyer or buyer are willing to demolish the property, and the city has no cost in that.
Well, that's what I think, too. Why would we say no to that? Yeah.
And most likely, it reflected in, uh, the interest in parties paying on the property in order to.
So do we give a timeline on when they have to have it demolished? Because.
Well, I was.
Do you want a timeline when you have it demolished, and a timeline to have something built on it?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
Because, I mean, it's just wasting away anyways, and it almost needs to be done as soon as you take.
Well, we want to be available before the weather gets rocky, why wouldn't you? And just to clean it up is gonna be a nice method to do.
So I think coming out of the, the last meeting, last discussion, was that once we received ownership of it, we would demolish it, turn it up for sale. This one just throws an extra little variable in there. Um, so what we're really deciding on tonight is, do we want to approve and demolish the property or not?
So then that would push us back, because we have to have our next meeting, and then the first hearing would be the following, and there's three. So then we wouldn't have our third hearing until November eighteenth.
We're gonna sketch all of October, as you're saying.
I myself think we should have.
So.
The equipment that they'll have, we can rent in snow or whatever, so.
Yeah, I'll have to. Catch for.
I think we should probably, and I'll throw this out there, table this until the next meeting, which will allow us to get together a series of conditions, if indeed the potential buyer, buyers, uh, want to take down the house themselves.
And Michelle and I met with petition day, and, you know, we're looking at a, a process, because the city hasn't sold a property for some period of time, so we want to make sure that we follow the right process to follow that through, so we can do that as well as put the conditions on, on, along with the property.
One thing we want to make sure, if we do, we do that well with buyers, tear down the show, that we, we require whatever liability, why insurance, and what else, and hopefully our attorneys can tell us whether we, in that regard, we were self-sure here.
And I did call South of Bryant Insurance and liability on that property.
I do want the electric unhooked, the water we have shut off, and then I called T C A, they're getting their stuff off, and I called Black Hills, and we got their meter, and we want that out, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and seconds. Do we have a, a vote, or do we have a motion table?
I think it's a motion table.
Motion table for Danny?
I'll second.
Then we don't have to do anything with that first motion, or do we need that motion? Yeah.
You just do that on the table.
You just leave that?
Leave that on the table.
Okay.
Just go pick this back up from the table at whatever point.
You mean, do you need to table it?
All right, um, all in favor of tabling the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion table carries with all ayes. So for the next meeting, we have to get, have the information of the process, to keep the sale.
So about the seventh of October.
Right. Seven to October, unless the council decides to call a special meeting.
And that's what I wanted to make, I'm gonna make, is if, then we also have to have that public, when the city, and everybody else's.
Well, we have to have a meeting before we go to a public hearing, and so we can have a meeting in a week, a special meeting in a week or two, to go through the process.
We'll have to let us know, Michelle, if they come up with a second, we can move on.
I think the lead to, the sooner the better for, for all of this, I do. So they have a special meeting, I'm for.
I have to add, just something to go on.
That we can get some set up.
Well, then the public hearing notice would contain the conditions that we put on, the sale of property, that we put on it.
Well, public hear, public hearing notices typically just announce the public hearing, but we would have to have information available for anybody that was interested to clarify on what the requirements would be. I just wonder how we did it, and why the public just.
Just didn't put it all in here, what else is on there?
We could put, see if we can, if we sell this particular property, property, and then the best conditions, and do all that, and the cost is, or less than that, it's really expensive.
Yep.
And we did that with, so we have, we can get that all set up then.
Correct.
So now what about the other properties that we have up for sale though?
Well, in checking on those, it's like, we, we asked about that, and it's like, okay, they're for sale, but they have to follow the same process.
But can you do, can you bump them together? Because they're all for sale, and maybe that would be a faster way of getting them sold.
You mean, you mean a public hearing put them all on the public hearing, if anybody would be interested in them?
Because we've got someone interested in the other one.
The one from south.
About this one here.
That's a good question, but that's the public.
Well, we'll, we'll follow for that, see if we can go public hearing for all, only those current properties that are for sale.
It's all under the.
Well, then that special hearing, then we can go over those, you know, if you're buying it, you have this many years to get something put up.
Build and. Because the other ones are quite early and, um, the good part.
I don't know if those, down the Old Johnson, I don't think that's ready yet. I wouldn't, what you're saying, I wouldn't put that on, just for the size, just for two.
Okay.
Double murder, if you press.
Oh, that's right, oh, I forgot about that one, yeah.
The Triver, that Dave Street, that, that property, that, which is correct, slight which is correct, section four, more north of Jensen.
They said the other one, okay, we got Schreiber's.
Schreiber's.
Which is correct.
By virtue of correct.
Yeah.
Johnson property.
Yeah, but that one I don't think is, is ready yet to.
Okay.
Just do the South Main.
The old, yeah, property, yeah. Which we can decide those at our special meeting, our special meeting to set public hearing. Okay, so Michelle, you'll let them, the bidders know?
And what, you have to let those two demolish? Why don't they know then? Is that what you're asking? Oh, I thought you were talking about.
The bids that we already received, that were.
Make sure they know.
Okay, let's move on to seven B, North Iowa Power Co., or two, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution, set public hearing, as noted.
Is that, you have stuff that's on our desk, or is that in here?
It's okay.
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 Number B, Michelle.
Six, twenty-six. Is it?
Something's up there, yeah.
Was that?
It's twenty-six.
Yeah, okay.
So we need to actually, the date, and what date should we, uh, prove it after the next meeting, presumably?
Yeah, again, I looked it up, because last time I got it restated, so it's, we can fill it in.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve passing that resolution to a new date of October seven, twenty, twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the rev, resolution to set public hearing on proposal for the assignment of easement to the Northwest Iowa Power Cooperative, N C O. Be it further resolved that a public hearing shall be held on a proposal to assign said easement area to Northwest Iowa Power Cooperative before the city council at one twenty-seven South Main Street in the city of Helena, Iowa, at five thirty P M on October seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and notice thereof shall be published as required by law.
Motion or a second?
I'll second.
All right, open for discussion. Any questions? Any further questions?
Michelle, we're working on that, and David, that's, we, for the public hearing. That's affidavit, to make sure this engine, your consignment is, uh, very, uh. And thanks, uh, K, for taking me off on the ground, and seeing what we got here. Sure, see someone makes sense.
The grass might sound bad.
It's nice to not blindly take actions.
Right.
So thanks for giving us that. All right, with a motion, a second, is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing them, I'm going to vote, vote, poll.
Danny Workmeister?
Aye.
Deanna Ralph?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Carol Knockoff?
Aye.
Motion, motion to pass resolution passes with all ayes. All right, we move on to seven C, South Maple Street, East Waterfront Street, discuss status of leveling of lots, Michelle, it's, or Kelly, it's Michelle, Michelle.
Um, I did put that in as an initial claim from Ryan Feldman.
Is that on the files?
Those agreed, probably, correct.
Right, but he is, he is used up that time. Um, I spoke to him, and he said he used up all that time in order to bring the level up as far as he could. He had to move a lot of it. A lot of the time was spent moving the dirt from one place up to the next and trying to level it out. Um, his opinion is don't spend any more, any more money trying to level the lots until a plan is made regarding development. The leveling could then be the responsibility of the buyer developer. Um, he did not remove any debris that was in that dirt, because it, he would have been, he would have used even more time removing all that debris. And he also recommended that if we're getting a, a big amount of dirt filled at once, to level it as, as it's brought in, versus sitting there and getting hard, and then trying to level it.
Makes sense.
And he's not concerned in Maple Street.
So do you think anymore?
Trent was out there today, and he did level off everything that's out there, so it's not all, I mean, it's not all moved up to where we wanted it, but right, as of right now, it's all leveled out.
So Brian leveled, or that, late last week, somebody else dumped, was it just one load on there, one or two? There's a couple loads on there, we don't know who it was, right?
I don't know if it was one of the drivers for Schmilling that doesn't actually, that wasn't a Schmilling truck that thought we were, they were still dumping over there or what, but Trent got that leveled out today, too.
And, and Brian did see that, when he said it, it wasn't a big issue, but he said we need a lot more.
Will we be getting any more, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, uh, he said, maybe next year, next year, not when it tear down the building.
Level part, oh, sure.
So I followed up with Kelly to see what's, who was dumping there, because I was thinking if we had more dumping, dump it alongside of the level part instead of on top of the level part, but.
Oh, sure.
And as, as he noted, we're, that whole area's a lot short on. As he noted, we're, that whole area is a lot short on dirt and recommendation to take everything you can get. My concern is to, if we're going to get more, who's it coming from, how are we going to manage, who's bringing it in there? And not just have it be a dumping ground. I don't know how we oversee it if it's not, I mean, Shmellin's not, I don't know where it's coming from. If we don't know where it's coming from, I'm not sure we really want to, so.
Yeah, so that's going to have some kind of sign, if you want to dump Paul City first or something, I don't know if you can put something up, you know? So not just anybody thinks they can go out there and do that.
Right, no dumping without second approval.
Yeah, some second approval or something.
I don't know my name out there like that. Oh, and here's Kelly's name and.
Because that's right there.
Maybe we can hire Chris Heron, so keep an eye over the lot. So, so at this point in time, until we, you know, I would recommend that until we know how to manage what's going to be dumped there, that we don't have anything dumped there. So I think, I mean, posting a no dumping sign probably makes sense.
Yes.
And whatever we add on to that, you know.
Or just put some fence across the entry, the nickels. I mean, if a person can't, that indicates that you shouldn't dump there.
Yeah, we need small fans.
Yeah.
Do you ever put small fans up? Do you ever put small fans up?
In that situation?
No, anywhere.
We put small fans up in the practice field and we used to do it at the football field that's all concrete now.
And where about that?
And we used to put it on the school property with it.
We have, currently at the bike path from the.
Yeah.
What would get these guys all for, they probably, probably.
Pretty good control of that property, you never know what people do. All right.
People dumping bodies in there.
Animals.
Or polluted soil.
True.
Soil.
Bring up their dogs too.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so they all said anything on setting C. The next item is update on plan improvement, contact, engineering workshop, et cetera. That, that's a carryover from before there was talk about to get that property engineered and I'm not sure what's new.
Well, first of all, it should be updated on development, right?
Yeah, that would be fine.
And that, the improvement.
Well, they all got this in plan. Does everybody know the difference between plan improvement, plan development? Plan improvement is individual investors that came together and bought J W's restaurant apartment building and rented it to J W, that's planning development.
That's planning improvement.
That's planning improvement.
Yep.
Planning development is a group that was put together, carried silver way back from a kind of community trust type of concept and got money from the state for purposes of developing residential development or development of some sort. So that's the development part of it.
And you can have a dash line to the, I mean, the city of Paul.
They do, they, they're, they work on behalf of the city officially, but officially, semi-officially to focus on improvement and development within the city.
Yeah, so we met with the planning development today, Marlon, Denny and myself, just kind of brainstorming on what we can do on new housing developments in town and I guess we will update as we continue to meet and here are some, some new places out. But we're, we're heading in the right direction, I think, at this point.
I think that the, the topic of conversation was, it's like, do we go after a big chunk of property on the edge of town, hoping that we can make a deal with a farmer only land? And then also was, what about what we have within the city already and is there a way to do that? We talked about various properties in here, in, in the town, in the city limits. So the, the good thing was they haven't gotten together for a little while, they haven't been coming up, I think, in October, so there's new attention being given to how do we pull together some sort of residential development? So just updated on that. We should maybe have a liaison sometime, actually, a liaison back and forth between them, us to update us on that, but I guess that might just be the comedians.
I think going forward, I think it'd be great to attend those meetings, everyone would be there. Who did you muster or what did you?
I don't care, the next one is October, they, they just do it occasionally, you know, as things.
So they don't have a set, I guess I never did ask that when you were in center.
I don't think you did anything.
I think you. Somebody, somebody has some questions or wants, thoughts.
So there was conversation that are, at past council meeting on, you know, should we get that property engineered? I'm not sure. And then that's like, so I think like the workshop, et cetera. Should we focus our attention and energies on getting something organized to move that forward? Or do we want to, you know, we might want to just do it in concert with development, the, the planning development group? So we, we don't need to decide that tonight, but we should decide that soon as far as how do we want to approach that. You're talking about some property that you're. That's one that engineering the property came up with because the other ones are pretty, if we buy land on the outskirts of the town, then there'd be, of course, engineering for the infrastructure and stuff like that, but the other lots really don't probably need engineering themselves, whereas Johnson, they are. Or we can just try to sell it as is too. If we, if someone has the opportunity to get some more dirt, do that part of it, as Brian said, we should probably do the dollars, spend the dollars to level it as it's coming in. But if, you know, I mean, if you look at that, it might not bias anything because if somebody that's going to buy that property might not pay more for it.
Just because.
In a certain condition versus what it is right now, so you might not recruit that money.
True.
So if we were amazed, we wouldn't have taken bids if we, you know, that somebody might be interested in taking it down themselves on this one.
Right, right.
So maybe find out who wants some interest first.
Did Brian give a statement how much more dirt that we would need? Did he even have a rough estimate?
Well, he was a lot, but.
He said two hundred loads. Okay.
That's possible.
If they like, by the way, we have to figure out.
At least a, or more dependent if we're going to fill both lots or just the one, you know, just the city versus the.
There is a lot of dirt there that's still, what else? There's an elevation chance you need to spray it on the pitch.
Right. There was probably, there was, but, but if you look at like the school, how much they had, they got of existing dirt to put in their foundation for something new and different type of fill, it could, it could be that there's enough good dirt there and then just fill with the right kind of stuff versus fill it up and then have to dig it back out and put in the foundations.
Because how many loads did we have delivered there?
Surely they were saying how many loads they brought, number seven?
It'd be nice to know what that was.
I bet you, I wonder if they even know.
They probably just.
They drop it.
Drop it, they took it over and dumped it, rid of it. Because, yeah, if they start digging in, these people, whoever takes it, they want a couple, uh, there's a couple different ones with one basements, they're going to be digging it all out of you.
It may not be out there, it may not be conducive basins, but they could be conducive to take out three or four feet to put the right kind of base underneath it.
Yep, right.
So I guess we'll just keep that on as an ongoing update topic, we probably won't do anything necessarily unless we want to do something before pulling developments as our total meeting. However, with our public hearing, we can talk about this some more and say, do we want to do this one? To get the word out there, it might make sense.
I'm sure we're going to have things there too, vegetation, weeds or seeds, something.
We can talk about that.
The thing is, is just probably just give it a spray so it doesn't grow weeds, keep the dirt in the spray or.
Rather than grass it again and dump over it. I suppose it depends how long it's since there.
What's the most cost effective, because short term, that stuff grows up fast. Short term, how do we keep it, spray it, spray it, spray it.
We didn't even do anything yet this year, we got the number in September almost.
It's like, if you look at Mas, Masman's building out in East Industrial Park where more haul in dirt and crap didn't have excess dirt there, that was just three weeks ago. You can't see dirt to pile, so weeds are growing up on there, they stirred up that weeds. Yeah, true.
How much weed, see if there's any stuff that we got from the school, we don't want it to be, we don't want it to be all that weeds either.
Right. So they'll have to watch it and start spraying it.
And so. Or it gets to be.
You have one of your guys that's prepared.
Yeah. Okay.
Initiate.
Yeah, right, and they'll say, well, I'm going to resign.
This is not why I took color line then.
Okay, item D, old bank building updates.
I did have a realtor go in with a few of her partners in, in the office and it's a big, it's a big building, it takes some deep pockets. If we were to list it, she thought thirty thousand was the max we could get. They weren't interested in listing it because they, they do not have the clientele that would have that deep of pockets to invest in something like that.
Did she even say names of that's who?
Um, she thought maybe Van, Vanderworth might take it.
Contact Todd.
So she wasn't sure, but maybe have the, the larger claims on.
Sure.
So she's probably put that property on our workshop coming up to list. And then the hearing.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, back on that, we did have somebody that also showed some interest in renting it. I don't think it's real viable for the city, but they want to rent it for personal use.
That was just the drive-in part of it back, right?
Part of the back.
You know, we should contact the school again, you know, it's like before the whole school started, project started, oh gosh, it was late twenty, twenty-three, they're look, at the time, they were looking to secure some space for office space. For when they tear the, the current administration building down. So at that point in time, it was a year and a half away, so in the twenty-three, they went and did that until school gets out in spring of twenty-five, but then they were going to be looking for office space. But I mentioned to them at the time, it's like, try to make a deal to hold it for a year and a half vacant, probably would work, but if it's available, we definitely would, consider something like that to use in the front end part of it. So just keep that in mind as we go through the process. And I haven't gotten an update from them, we can check to see if they, they might have some other space by now, but. But now we're still nine months away from that, starting itself. Okay, you want some? E, pocket park update. Do you have a question, Michelle?
We just need to know what we're, what we're going to do with it, you know, we had talked about putting that up for sale, but again, you know, can't just have one person, you know.
Getting up.
Getting that and especially not, not for a dollar, we, we need to sell it. But we need to, we need to know, are we going to be using it for a community green space or are we going to sell it to someone? We almost need to, we almost need to figure that out. I guess I could probably talk about that here now, just because I would like to, for the Parks and Prop, utilize the cap system, cap spots that Amy Schmidt is doing and seeing if those kids would be able to work up something with that piece, the pocket park, and even something with the city park with the pickleball, the basketball court, just doing something to update it, new equipment. Again, it's not something that we have to do right now, but at least we can get an idea of what we can do and then we can start looking into grants and, and other ways that we can update those, those spaces. But, you know, we can't really say, or I can't really tell them, yep, go ahead and do that if we're going to be selling it.
So maybe that gets addressed at our public hearing discussion, maybe to the property.
And what sort of phase that I think you were.
Um, it was the, the tax assessment. I don't even remember what it is.
I know, but I think we should have that too, because we kind of have so many, you know, what it's, what.
But we have, we have these properties around that we just need to do something with them.
Right.
Whether it's green space or selling it to have someone build something, just need to do it.
Well, it just would be nice if we got some interest, so they throw out some ideas. They had a little bit of us.
Eric.
Yeah.
Yeah, in checking with towns around, you know, you, usually it's like when, when you sell something for a dollar, let's say as, as an example, it's usually a great tax base because then it gets your, your money back there.
There it goes.
So we have to look at, so that would typically require a book on us that could be ours, you know, sell it to somebody with the right kind of incentive to build something right. So it's our only downtown space really for somebody building a building that.
And it has been what we do with the old bank, you know, there's.
I also talked to her too, that Amy Schmidt about, you know, doing the kids thing in there too.
Oh.
And so she has her daughter in Sioux City and said that she goes to some of those places too, so she was going to get some of that and throw some of that out those kids fast. And, and then I agree with the one that was, is up there by a sponsor that we bought the, the name, where they would do a fund stuff for the kids to play, all of that, running and bouncy stuff and all of that. It wouldn't be one of those, one of those big ones that they have the trampoline and stuff, they would do that. So I don't know what she's doing.
Well, the market, market part, should we, uh, just go for that we're accepting bids? Maybe like, uh, when we do, sell our bidding? When we have bidding on it for, and then we'll, we'll have to have an acceptance of it for us, then you take it through the process.
Then you take it through the process, right? So we might want to include that on our list of pro, of properties that we're looking at from, to set up for public hearing as well, because we could theoretically do that same process on each one of the properties, because there's a way to put them all out there.
Well, we won't, if there's, it sounds like we have interest, interest on private part, going to be that. Everybody's going to do it, so that's what we're going to do. See, maybe that's what we're taking bids and, which is, bids might have to be.
Sure, so we need.
It has to be a certain amount that we won't take under.
We have to set, set the requirements for property again in the rotation.
Because I think there was interest in it, but I think it was more of a conversation that was had that, well, we could just give it to you for a, a small amount, but at this point, I don't, I wouldn't want to entertain that unless we're actually going to build something on there.
Right, so that's what we're looking for, private region property, what are the requirements?
But I think Eric just wanted more of like a.
Just want to have more historical stuff and not have it all upside down, I think. That's what I'm trying to guess.
Okay, so we'll add that to our list for properties. Our special, for contractors. Yep. Next item is update on city's top priorities, we had a, our workshop July twenty-ninth, where did that month and a half go since that? Where did that month and a half go since that time? So we probably bring those to the top again. And just briefly about how we approach, does everybody remember what our top priorities were?
Once I get married.
So, so I jotted down the Lagoon Pond one, um, the slip station, and the new line. City Hall, issues at the city hall, which is somewhat being worked on on the water issues. Fire station, bonding and our East Broadway property, fire protection needs, electrical generation, and housing development. Are the ones that I have to end to recap were kind of the top priorities.
What was your east west line? So those are the ones that we put in the street area?
The east lift station and new line, that was the Wood Street.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
So the word that Michael did here, just to get some results from that last.
It did, um.
Some. Where.
The doors, yeah, yeah, the doors.
And or back door.
Uh, this stuff is some water, these windows and he said he has an idea of this.
He has some more ideas based on what he saw, but didn't work first time around, so.
So what did he do with those and he actually do some? The doors, yeah.
He did, yeah, he did something.
Okay.
The, the front one, if I recall, there, there was some roofing material that was raised up. That once you, you know, looked at it closely, there was, water was sucking around in there and getting out behind there. In the, the back, I think it was a combination of flashing and gutter of this position.
Okay. Well, it's good, at least he's seen something.
There was, well, probably we saw the cracking over here, but foundationally, they cleaned out, uh, shortened the down spout lines so that they weren't jammed into the bottom of PVC line, so they could drain faster with fluid. You know, remember what he did up here and tried that?
It was plugged, wasn't it?
It was, yeah, gutter was plugged, significantly was plugged, so it overflowed, but now that we've got, the rain's better, we still have some water, so.
It's still, although I think it was still plugged.
It's still raining out for a while.
It was a really heavy rain.
Well, the part of it, this end dumps into a PVC line that runs down and then we don't know where it goes. It doesn't seem to go to the street, so it might go across the, the whole front of this building. There might just be too much length and that can be plugged deeper down there as well. I guess it's a big jetpack, that line, I guess I'll have to take a look at.
I mean, this is something that'd be good, the name affects on it.
I should put up a maintenance going, going through the.
Yeah, probably yearly or something, once a year.
So we need to keep our top priorities, top priority in front of us, so.
Yep.
Keep adding those on here. I think our, our top priority now probably is, you know, properties moving.
Yep.
And which would help, you know, one of them causing the drought, hardening. Okay, anything else on that? All right, new business. Eight A, entertaining motion to approve hiring and compensation for our color line.
Please read, read the resolution that I left on the table.
Oh, that's right, you said you.
So the notification of motion to approve that resolution?
I want to approve the resolution. Due is all by the council of the city of Polina, Iowa, to approve the hiring of Bryson Martindale for a full-time apprentice lineman at forty-five dollars per hour of city of Polina, Iowa. I second that.
All right. You gonna tell the council anything about your thoughts there?
Well, we, we actually interviewed two different guys. One was, he was from Smithfield, I think it is. And the other one.
Which one?
Yes, this one's from Smithfield, down in Sioux City. And very good, I mean, we were all three impressed with him. Answered really good questions and he's, one of his, he had definite things on, he never likes to be late. He likes to stay busy, he likes things to be done right, and he likes to fix things. It just breaks. And he said, I'm a farm kid. And the other one was very good also, um, he was over by, so what's your city here?
Great South.
Kind of that area. And, um, and he was, he, um, you know, they're both fresh out of school. And we thought he was good too. In fact, Kelly said he would take them both.
Of course he would.
And I said, no, I think that's gonna take a little bit, but we can try. And, um, but so, and then Jean called him because we didn't want him to keep interviewing because we knew we weren't gonna have the meeting right away and lose him in the process. Which we told him that we were definitely gonna be talking tonight and, and he said, well, what do you, I think he asked you about dollars, didn't he?
Yeah.
And he told him that we were definitely thinking twenty-five. Twenty-five and we had also checked with Primgar and that's what they did with their new one, so we found we were in ballpark. And he has, uh, he's, you know, wants to get some housing, just, they're talking about some housing and so we need to maybe help him with that a little bit.
Let's see, can you share that his credentials or license, this sort of.
He has a C E L A, he's got a tanker endorsement. No, was there anything else I remember?
So what's his color line status? Is it N C C grad, present?
Yes.
So what, so what do they come out of there with in comparison, let's say, Aiden will take the Aiden through all these here?
Well, Aiden was going through the apprenticeship program, the junior program.
Okay.
Which we probably start with him too at some point.
Yeah, and he did ask about that, wasn't it? Both of them, I think, did.
Really?
And then what does all that entail? Did you? Who set it up? The morning?
Uh, they have to work so many hours a night, so many, I mean, they have to work a lot of hours, so it'll probably take five, six years to get that all done. And there's a bunch of, I think there's four, four tests and a final test that they, there's some hands on, so.
Any other questions, discussion? How many was the one with Aiden?
Thirty-something.
What, what thirty is right?
Thirty-two or thirty-four, Harry.
He was with us how many years?
Eight. No.
Five?
Yeah. Eighteen, I think, is, yeah, cause he was here.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Any other questions or discussion? Any other questions or discussion? Any other summary vote? Was, was this a little public?
Yeah, that's, it was. Danny Wardmeister?
Aye.
Jane O'Ro.
Aye.
Nicole Jacob?
Ayes.
Carol McCollum?
Aye.
Motion carries, all ayes. All right. Eight B, going to Brighton Snow Tractors, Groom Trail System, thirty questions.
Thirty-four, yeah. Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. First of all, I entertain motions to approve the Brighton Snow Tractor Green Trail System. I'll make a motion. To approve the Brighton Snow Tractor Groom Trail System. We'll second.
I second.
All right, discussion. Where's the bill? Procurate for Vegas.
I did, um, talk to this, uh, Steve Wearsna about the, the V O T permit. They don't give the permit till the city's approved of. So what he said was last year's. So if you wanna look at the V O T permit that they, that they do get after it's approved by the cities.
Hold that on.
Yeah, and he said the last few years, they actually haven't even went into town, except that they still have to get permission for us.
So cause the old rail bed, the city doesn't own all of that, other than, you know, do we authorize that? Or they have to go to them? So we can own, so we can approve their map, we can only approve the city properties part of that.
On the city elevator house.
Elevator has the majority of it. So this looks like, if I was to take the votes in, it's like the highlight part, it doesn't look, the roof, it just comes here from fifty-nine, right? Let's see, where's the, that city action sheet that they're, oh, is that on that?
Yeah, is that really sent?
So what they're asking for is the primary highway right away in Brighton, both sides of ten. Not on rail.
Yeah.
So if we, if we would do this, that means that they would have technically the right to groom one side of the other of Highway ten, because they groom their trails. That would be different than what we would have thought, isn't it?
This is something that is just second pass from last year.
I was gonna say.
It always, we just learned outside, if I just go.
We're paid it, but I don't know. Figured anyway, we were doing.
Eight, where?
Nine, ten. But we just have to do ours though.
Maybe just the, the city limits of Highway ten.
Yeah.
Right. But is that what we want to do? If they maybe wanna visualize one side of the other of Highway ten? The, the south side, is it interesting to go through?
What do they normally do? I guess I don't, I don't really.
I think the guy says they go, they don't use Highway ten, they use the.
The ditch.
The, the visual features for town there, but if it's the old rail bed, that's not what.
That's what I'm hearing.
On page thirty-six, that's what their map shows, it's like. It almost looks like the higher end area comes down, as Kelly's mentioned, doesn't stay on Highway ten, goes to the rail area. So just on the east edge, it seems like maybe the highlight drops down. Which would include, why you get a property, most property that the city doesn't. I'm gonna deal with the old guy.
Yep. Down there, right? I'm just wondering how they, yeah, it's like, where would they come off? By Dollar General there?
No, or Wood Street, or.
Did they follow the, the bike trail in? It's like on the light.
I don't get attention to that over here.
So the city owns the old rail bed, east of, uh, East Industrial Park. So if you take the east lot lines, it's like Mike Singh's place. Two places, and just go straight south there. The pedal, pedal like at the gold Howard Cross property, we own it there, but that doesn't seem to be the part they're looking at. And then the elevator owns everything else. All the way through to Rutland Street. And then through the ocean.
Any gift like streets or, or anything, just this?
The ocean owns it out there, then Dry and Felton, then, uh, I just cleared it does. Clean it does, I wanna chunk them from Willow Street to, um, you know, if you draw a line kind of north, south through the football field and track near there. You know, it's from Willow to there. And then lanes on, on the west side of town. So it's very blue. The city owns, if they're, if they're looking at rail, if they don't say rail.
So it's, I think, the highway. Yeah, this is just highway right ways?
Yeah.
For eighteen fifty-nine and Highway ten?
Right.
So the, the only thing they're talking about is like going out of town? Like wheeling out to the creek? Just be a ditch there to groom that?
Within the primary highway right away, both sides. So that would be one side, that's back to. That, that's back to our, is the city agreeable to allowing them to do a groomed trail along Highway ten? On one side, well, cases would be.
I mean, a groomed trail is just a, I have to double the soul a little bit.
Yeah. And they handle all of that, so we don't have to, I mean, they've done it every year.
Yep, that's what I said.
Yeah, I don't think they have, do they? I don't.
Yeah, they would every year.
Along Highway ten? I don't, I thought, I asked that, I didn't.
Yeah. Yeah, I said we did this last year.
It was go by.
Grandmas out there too.
Sure.
Right, but that's out. So where, where does it come, which side of Highway ten do they come through town?
I think it'd be this side, well, south side.
South side.
Yeah. That's the south side.
Yeah, cause I, I think, and it goes over by.
All of those, yeah. When they get it done, I think it's on the south side.
So they must go through, you know, where, go right away by your place, your shop?
They don't go through that, North of you?
Uh, maybe down over here.
That I don't remember. But I don't really understand it either.
I know there's those, mobile stop signs like on.
Yep, you see those.
Right on Maple Street. So I'm sure, I'm pretty sure they come through the.
On the bike path there.
But this has nothing to do with that, I don't think. This is just a grooming of highways.
I don't believe one on the south part.
So when you say this is groomed highway, first snow trailer, what do you think? It's just a highway right away? Mm-hmm.
It looks like, cause then they said, which is send them it to V O T, so I'm guessing they're just looking at, the city doesn't have a problem with the highway right ways and then they'll send it to V O T and see if they agree or approve.
Yeah, then they take care of it. Now, so let's talk for the member first. Through April.
I mean, what I'm seeing, this, this has nothing to do with what they used to do, which is they used to come to the city and ask to use the old rail bed and work something. This has nothing to do with that, I don't know if they're just leaving everybody on their own to work within the existing streets or what they're, or if they're gonna have a follow-up later or what, I don't know.
So we've got an ordinance that deals with snowmobiles, bike circuits, is that consistent with this going out?
Sorry, say that again?
We have an ordinance that deals with allowable and non-allowable riding with snowmobiles within town. I'm just wondering, if anybody knows if this is consistent with what our ordinance says.
Yeah, I mean, it just, that ordinance, for the city-controlled streets, it just says you can ride when there's snowfall on the street. Regardless, and otherwise, it's simply on the street nearest in and out of town. Also, it's sort of dropping it out of town.
Do you happen to know, is that on, technically on a street or all? Do you happen to know, is that on, technically on a street, or also including the street right away?
Uh, it's supposed to be on the street.
On the street, okay.
Not supposed to be on any, like, maintain, but like a basic property on the street.
All right, now that's more than my question, so what's your thoughts, counsel? Hi. Are you ready to vote?
Yeah. Yep.
And is this a?
Nope.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion, say goodbye by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, say aye? Carry. A.C., accept resignation from Deputy Clerk Alex Griggs, effective October fourth. entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation from Deputy Clerk Alex Griggs, effective October fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to move a second.
I'll second. I don't know where I was going to go.
Yeah, whatever's that?
I don't know, I gotta go with another motion, I think. We don't approve it.
All right, discussion. Okay, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye? It's good to see that would be in some application.
Yes. That's on some state here. Mercy. In fact, we have interviewed them already, so hopefully, we'll get a few more and see once, Michelle just keeps getting them in there.
All right.
Yes, yes.
Do you ever take her opinion?
Oh, yes, we do. We take them like when we're doing the lineman Kelly, it's going to Kelly's Sheriff's Office, or what's, we have Nate.
Nate, well, it's the name of the one.
Yep. You always have the person that's gotta work.
Person supervisor, managers, gotta take the lead.
And we have opened up that one, we can come to if he wants to, or not doing anything, or wants to listen.
Okay. A.D. Peter Hill, do you want to talk about a meeting that we had, or?
I think you should start, no.
Okay. So, so last week, Jean and Carol and I and Nate met with Sutherland, city clerk, mayor. And they're, they're new part-time police chief. A couple meetings ago, came up that they were trying out using part-time officers to do their policing in town. So, we're at Coffee, is their police chief, he's a providing town conservation officer.
I don't, uh, state, I believe.
Is he state, state conservation?
I know he's not over in town.
Okay, so state conservation. So, you know, licensed, certified, whatever, that, that is law enforcement officer. He and four other people that, that all have law enforcement credentials are combining to provide policing for Sutherland. So our curiosity was, since we haven't been having success finding a second officer, was to find out some more information from them. And should we, as a city, try that part-time concept for a second officer? You know, to supplement Nate's hours, and we have our two officers. They, they speak highly of it, over there in Sutherland, they're, they're early on, they're learning some things as well. But scheduling seems to be going well for them. But before, you know, we went down the road and this, we're gonna run this by you, and see once if the council is okay with looking at hiring. This, the equivalent would be up to a full-time, so what they do is between the five of them, they come up to forty-plus hours, you know, so that they cover eight persons' position. And we could, you know, potentially do the same thing, um, just amongst ourselves, and we're talking about, you know, maybe we go partway with that. To say, not necessarily find five people right away, eight hours, approximately eight hours each. But maybe, you know, three or something like that, to then look at the scheduling. Nate, we probably charted Nate with the scheduling, since he's our police chief, Brent on their side, he's acting chief, so he handles the scheduling there as well. So they, they come with, you know, there's additional training. Their compensation is, for the part-time officers, is thirty dollars an hour, a little bit more per hour than, you know, what would necessarily potentially be, but they don't have benefits. So they get paid in IPR's contribution, but no other benefits come off, that come off of the. So, you know, we, Michelle has posted, I think we posted, right, no, we don't have, we haven't posted yet, cause we would assume, is the council okay with that? Because right now we have approval of hiring, trying to find a second officer, um, not this part-time concept. So we want to get your, you know, council's thoughts and authorization, you know, if you will, to, to move ahead with that concept.
And if I may, just, I mean, we, it's, this is a fairly broad expansion of something we have done in the past, I mean, we have in the past. I had the authority, we, we had a cap, I think we had a twenty-five dollar an hour authorization. And just for a more short-term part-time officers, I could go out and, you know, at that time, we could find a few. Recent retired or whatever, and then we could, you know, basically, they were just filling in for, basically filling in on any time off, primarily. Or maybe intentionally, just to be an extra person on the motivational streak thing or something, but that was basically the thing there. So I mean, it basically just kind of being an upgrade and expansion of that. So, I, you know, I got an email in, he thought he had a line on some additional people, where he said he had a big list of people who are interested. And you just have limited, you know, a certain number there, but he had a number of people, so I got an email into him. And when he gets back to me, hopefully we'll have a pool of protective police candidates, because it's just a matter of what are we gonna offer them?
It sounded like Sutherland was very pleased with it, had been happy with it, and they said what's nice, what I got out of it too, was the fact that they'll have somebody scheduled, like, maybe for mornings. Where otherwise you're just getting off work, and you're not gonna be out there, but this way we could have another person come in, maybe stood. Right, and even with our school, and like you said, with the school, you do want some traffic guy or some, uh, police out there, just to keep track of things. And so, plus they bring their own supplies, usually they'll have their own guns, they'll have their own, um, gear, so, you know, it's not anything we gotta come up with, we don't have to send a class.
You mentioned maybe just a couple of things, pepper spray, a few little items like that.
Right. Minor, or minor, I should say.
Basically, we'd be looking at shirts. Vest issue will kind of, I don't know, we talked a little bit about that, it was still a little bit vague, I don't know if they, if they bring their own vestry. Uh, if we have something on hand that actually fits, but at this point it'll be kind of how far do we push past the expiration? Because most of what we have on hand, if it's one expired, they have a five-year, year-end license and. And otherwise, if the, if we needed to purchase, I, part of the thing, part of what's in my mind is, I think just about, or at least ninety-five percent of the vests we have on hand would purchase through government grants. And part of that is, there is a requirement requiring wearing of the vest, but I don't, I haven't had a chance to look, I don't remember what did that would apply to a part-time? Or what is this full-time, or what the, any degree of that stipulation was. So the, the, the paying up might be, you know, if we hire them, based on that, we might have to come up with some vests for it.
Yeah, I think they've worked out pretty well.
Yeah.
But they have their own gear, whatever, but.
We've got some, you know, the budget dollars, we should go with that.
Well, vests, ones vests with the carriers and the plates, you're talking about a grand.
Okay.
That would be your budget, right, made already?
Hmm, for one person, and usually I finagle, the applications in the spring with a fall decision. Usually we go through, uh, that bulletproof vests through the federal government, which then pays half, if, if the timing and everything works out. But, you know, then you have to, I mean, if, you can, if you have a firm idea when, or think you're gonna have somebody hired, you can kind of preview it. And like, you know, when you actually order it, you gotta, it has to be sized to a person, to at least a certain extent, so.
So what do you think about the concept, you know?
And it sounded like this Brent guy had some ideas on people that he thought would probably work for us.
Right, so yeah.
That was, is that what you're bidding?
So his, his concern was, so, several of the people that they didn't hire were east of Sutherland and Peterson, he didn't know.
Right, that would be one issue too, is you might need to look at your residency and or, you know, where, where they can be, where they can respond from. Um, lots of sorts of.
Yeah, we might have to, the council might have to, you know, change our ordinance for distance from point that they can live. And you could, you know, focus it on just, to part-time police officers or something like that, which is across the board. But his, his recommendation was that if we're gonna go with this, that he could potentially get us some names of people that I thought might come over here, but then we can post it, you know.
Also. It has to be posted, for ten days.
Well, we would, we would post it for sure, but I mean, not just a legal requirement, but actually finding some, some good part-time candidates. And you said you got super good response from that.
At least people of a little bit better, right, I mean, there.
Um, I mean, not, I don't, I don't know, we haven't even had any names yet, I mean, he, he was confident that they'd all be good, cause I think they're, at least for the most part, are all currently active.
Currently active.
Some sort of position. And, and or recently retired, so.
And just like we do on our police officer candidates, and we could have background chefs.
Yeah, and in, in this case, it's a little simpler, cause I just call up the academy, you know, if they're already certified or have been certified, I call up the academy. Hey, what's their current certification status, have they ever been decertified or anything, and, you know, just.
Cause you have time off that you're wanting to take, is that here soon, or, or that's just?
I mean, that's, that's.
You just wanna, you don't have anything set?
Yeah, he had some set.
I had some, like, nerves, but it was just, it's time.
We would like to see him do something in that.
It just raises the issue again, it's like, you know. We've been trying for quite a long time to find a second officer, Kevin.
Twenty-one months.
And then that causes problems there, and just overall coverage for, you know, school mornings and.
Well, and everything, and the only person having it, even if there's an accident or whatever, then he's gotta go back out, you know.
Like today, that page about two hours earlier than it would by now.
Yep. So I just think, yeah, we gotta prove that we're interested in this, and that you can get ahold of this Brent guy and start getting some names and.
So yeah, I, I'm actually sending an email, and so just waiting for him to come back or something.
Right.
And for us, or our council. So, so to consider staffing options, I think that considers an action item, so I would entertain a motion to authorize pursuing filling our second officer position with part-time officers, if that's right, if we're. If you'd like to make that motion. I made that motion. You have a second?
I'll second.
What was that mean?
Jean.
Any other discussion? Here now, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye? Carry. Move ahead. Uh, A.D.
Um, so Marvin, he, I don't even know.
I, I saw.
Tuesday, yeah, he had called, and he had seen in the paper, the review, right?
Yep.
Um, that there was a grant writing class, and, and simply wanted to. Iowa State extension, down to Cherokee, so I was able to go, and it was, was for three hours, and I was like, oh my goodness, what am I gonna do for three hours listening to this? But it was very informative, um, it went by really fast. Um, there was quite a few people there, um, we had Clintby, Peterson, um, Marcus, Royal. Um, a lot of people were, um, city, city officials, um, city administrators, and there's a couple mayors there. Um, and they're all kind of doing the same as what we are, fire stations, parks, um, sewers, uh, just updating a lot of, a lot of things that, I mean, to be updated. Um, I got a lot of, um, information here, and I did print out for you guys, if you do want some. There's a lot of, uh, things that I think that we could really go for. I know one of them is the old bank, you know, what we wanna do for that, there's grants out there for, um, you know, demolition. There's grants, and that's up to a hundred thousand, there's grants for up to six hundred thousand to restore it. So we've got, uh, there's certain ones, um, some of the lower ones are more like your state, um, and then your higher ones are, are your federal. Um, which is a lot more work to do, um, they said that it could be anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty pages.
Cool.
To, to get that stuff done, some of them will hire people to create a whole pamphlet. Of specified, specific, of what they're, what they're looking for. But again, I mean, getting six hundred and some thousand would be, that's, that's amazing.
Well, we know that Darren Spencer does it, and so is that Steve Halligan from Sibley, that's it. So, or people that, if they weren't, they would be able to do it if we got to that point.
Um, there was a lot of people who were open, uh, to networking with, um, with us, I had asked if we could bounce some ideas off. I know, like, um, Clintby, they have already gotten quite a few grants for, for theirs, and they had a lot of, um, like the burn grants and catalyst grants and target grants that they have done. Well, they're not really on, on these, but they have gone out and they've done their homework themselves, and, and they've gotten those. Um, so yeah, I, I can hand some of that information out. Um, there's a couple wastewater, I don't know if that is something, water and waste disposal? Is that something that we're even looking at?
Does, does that work for lift stations and lines and stuff like that?
I'd have to look, or, I mean, I can give that information, but, I mean, if we're planning on doing something, might as well go for some of these grants.
Yeah, so we're about to start getting going.
Yeah, Iowa State information, they come, I think, one city they used to look at, I guess, I know it's here, like, a few hundred thousand over a three to five-year period. And they had thirty people from their town go, and then they were getting over that same kind of time, granting six million dollars, you know, over a five-plus-year period. Um, because, so they're often available for them and their past experience.
No, the thing that was just stressed a lot was, you have to have a plan first, though, before you even think about going for a grant. You have to have everything, not everything done, but you need to do your homework on what you're going to be doing. Um, we've got a lot of things that we can do, um, but again, we're, we're gonna have to take the time and, and do it.
Did they give you any thoughts about how cities actually, I mean, it's like, the concept is there, the concept is good, but kind of like step-by-step process? How does a city, like, if we wanted to implement this, if you will, go after all the grants reasonably with, or anything? You gotta find out probably at least a year, you know, through the application process. Um, but then, you know, how, how do cities pull it together, do they have, doing writing grants? Do they ask for volunteers, do they hire people, you know, those kinds of things?
There are some people that, um, they might have a, a group, um, within the city, and then like the, um, subgroup or subcommittee that kind of works together with that. There was one gal that she does grants for multiple towns, and she's been doing this for quite a while. Um, yeah, there's, uh, some of them just do it themselves, some of them hire. Oh, there, there was kind of a whole range of, of what they do, it's just what you're willing to do yourself and what you're willing to pay for.
I mean, just by the time you look at all the things that are, that happened in learning, and, you know, knowing the deputy clerk coming on board, it's like, so we aren't going after grants. So I would see that we shouldn't have a big reservation of hiring somebody that grants for us.
And that takes time.
And that takes time and expertise, and, and so, let's say it costs you a lot of money, but you're getting a lot more than that. Right now, we're just missing all of those opportunities. And then from that process, we can learn, and maybe become a little bit more self-sufficient, help, help ourselves, or continue.
I think some of those, um, those smaller grants, and I mean, some of those smaller ones could be twenty-five to fifty thousand. Um, I think we could probably. Um, I think we could probably tackle those are, are self-sufficient.
Yeah.
Um, but then some of those bigger ones, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that is going to need some, some more expertise. I think that's beyond what we can do.
Yeah. Right, and I think when you're looking at a bigger amount that you need, then that's especially when you're like, you're looking at grants, you're like, no, you're right.
Right, yeah. And I think this is gonna, I don't wanna say force us, but kind of in a way to figure out what we want to do.
Focus on what's out there.
Yes, well, we gotta focus, yes, right, what we're looking at.
Because, I mean, at this point, yeah, we've, we've, uh, missed a lot of money, opportunity out there. And I don't think we wanna do that anymore.
No.
Well, if you can, uh, share that information with council members and Michelle and Kelly, and not, not that all those people have to write them, but to be aware of them as we're thinking down the road or thinking about projects that need to be done, there's projects that need to be done sometime, but not right away. Look at where are they, are they able to get some involved? That's kinda the only way that we can deal with it, huh? Therefore. Okay. Any other questions?
Er, did you just call me Michelle? I'm sorry, Paul.
Michelle or Mom Michelle? Don't ask, don't ask Michelle how many times I've seen her.
I know you don't like papers, but the grants and stuff.
I know.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to A F.
Oh, so the two pages are together. Yeah, right. Yeah, so that one is Marvin's, this one's Chris'. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, Paul.
Yes. And they will be doing an online one too, and I do encourage people to do it.
Can you give that permission?
Yeah, she's gonna be sending that out via email.
Right.
Whenever that's available.
Who is this, you said, from Iowa State?
Iowa State.
Yes, Lindsay Henderson is the one. She said that she is open to questions or guidance or anything on, on those.
Iowa State has a big, kind of a civic program that they're calling. Okay. Thanks for doing that. Let's see, A F, um, if you see the penalty box. So this has come up in some of our recent meetings that we should, you know, think about actually implementing penalties for missing things and whatever that aren't complied with. So we thought that it'd be just gonna be pull pages out of our code, um, and get familiar with that and what it talks about, so we don't have to act on this tonight, but we wanna decide what we wanna do with these things going forward. And they're pretty significant, you know, civil penalties, you know, corrections, first offense, that will get somebody's attention in comparison to now, when, now we really aren't doing any of that, we're just charging people for violating their law, and beyond that, there's no other financial impact, right? Other than like fees.
Right.
So that's just to get familiar with what our current code says, and then also decide, are they right as we're now updating our code? This is Darren has some time after his flooding involvement.
Right, and that, obviously, you got it all set too. So that was a big plus.
Yeah. So all that's been said to him, but we really, as council hasn't spent, I don't think a lot of time on saying, it's like, how, how do we combine things, but like this one, is this the right, should these be revised at the same time? So.
Is this she given how, whenever you send a sort of file now? So is she ready? What is she, do you know what she sends? Or do you do it?
I don't, I, well, Tisha's been doing this sort of thing maybe two or three last couple times.
Okay.
But if I send, just sent a letter, reminding someone to violate their law, I do send the ordinance.
Okay.
Um, I don't know this.
But not, not-
But not, that's when that shows the-
You know, this would, this, this will be quite the process. You can't just go charge send this.
No, but like, if they saw, like, okay, better do this, because it could amount to that, or it could go to that.
It could, it could even, even be with some of our ones that we need for our notices probably too.
So, that's for your information for our code. So, one of the things I learned is we talked about we're updating our ordinances, we really aren't updating our ordinances, we're updating our city code with the code changes that we've made via ordinance. So, so when we say, let's, you know, let's go look at our city ordinances, it's really a look at our city code, which is adopted by ordinance.
Right.
Anything else on that, Cheryl, that I'm pretty? It's from reports. Kelly.
I'm busy with the town charities, we've got a new building, if anybody wants to come see that sometime.
I see, that's nice, that's nice.
Um, Trent has his CBL, he got that last week. That's that. Um, we've had a bunch of blowcades, spent a lot of time doing that. So, mostly I'm busy with, check out a few trees.
I think Trent, at the end of this month, will be able to go to one of your classes too, because I have the six months in.
Um.
You know, so I'm just telling you, cause I was trying, when I seen-
Yep.
Uh, three books, huh? Yes, cause he started in April.
Josh is going to water and sewer, uh, dealing the lakes tomorrow and Wednesday.
Good, cause he's got water.
He gets CDU's.
Working on sewer, right? Right? But no, I know Trent should be early by the first of, maybe April?
So a couple items, do you have an update on, from saving like that?
I called him last week, and he was supposed to call me today, he didn't, so I'll call him tomorrow.
Yeah.
Karen?
And I knew you talked earlier about sewers and stuff, or to flushing, are we, are you, is that still on your agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's like storm sewers or sand turd sewers or what?
Flushing of the water height, or the-
Water means, I think, or flushing height.
So that's sewers.
Oh, did I say?
That used to suck.
I, I use sewers, but I, she, he, he knows, he probably knows.
I've looked it up, I guess, so.
Oh, your vernacular, right?
Yep, he knows. He figures me out. And then we were gonna clean the, like, the sewer things up too, weren't you?
Yep.
I don't know how you do that, but.
With the street sweeper.
That sweeper will do it. Well, where is that Trent? Put him right on that.
So, so street rocks, they're still on our list, you know? When we're doing that, we should probably do some of those east-west ones that we could, they've got the rocks up across, like, green and navy and stuff. Um, so somebody mentioned put the new guy on, what project was that?
Oh, awesome.
You know, what was it? But anyway, so, so one of the things that I keep checking with Kelly on is, we have still a bunch of downtown streetlights that aren't, but, uh, that now that the days are getting shorter, that would be nice. I would prefer him to be on that versus grunt work. No, the grunt work doesn't like to get done, but.
There's one down, a lockdown for me that always stays on, even during the day. Um, right in front of the yellow house, like in between where Mark Johansson and I can't think, Anderson. I noticed that on, on my walks when I come back, it's on.
The light of what, on the street?
It's got a bunch of trees around it, like branches, so I don't know if maybe that is doing, I don't know.
I'll look it up.
And now that I said it, it's probably not, it's not on.
Like, when I tell him I see the bathrooms over by the park on, then they, then I don't see them forever again. It's just a tough, Kelly's something to do. But I don't call in at eleven o'clock at night to tell him.
All right, anything else, Kelly? Michelle?
Um, Ryan Coleman did tell me they have forty-six planes in August.
Okay. That just amazes me.
That does include all the local planes.
But that, that's really forty-six landings and takeoffs, right? It's not forty-six different planes.
Right, yeah, oh.
It's just activity.
It could be them, but at least we're carrying those.
Yes.
Right.
And you haven't seen anything on spring, I'm, I'm hearing, okay.
So who do we follow up with, that airplane or the airport command?
Why isn't Brian tapping with them? He's-
Oh, he's our-
He's our manager.
I talked to him, basically, Michelle, both of them. He has been in contact with, with people.
With the two elevators?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there's a couple other outfits doing that.
Those are, okay, good.
He's aware of it, so.
Okay.
And, I know you probably see these two back. Oh, right, so I brought them back. I pulled these out. I just put them on planes. Kinda like some more explanation. There's another one standing, I think, out. This, okay, so the first one is the Holley Sedentary Sewer. And they said it was from inspection, construction, um, site visits. And then the other one, they said it's from East Broadway Street Development, East Broadway Street Haven Extensions, Southwood Elevate Station, Southwood Street Force Main Extensions, and something along the Bridge Trail Flood Repair.
Well, we don't know if anyone's number was up.
It's, it's just these two. Um, it's forty-six.
Forty-six. Do they have dates for those? Or they just listed?
I know with the bike path thing, I did call Jason after the flood, and that was before I found out the state was gonna take care of it.
But this is supposedly when they've been here, from these hours.
Or done services for it.
Or did something.
Why, you list the, those ones again?
Yeah.
For the forty-six, for the city, um-
It says East Broadway Street Development. East, sounds like that. And then East Broadway Street Haven Extension. Southwood Street Lift Station. Southwood Force Main Extension. And then with Bridge Trail Repair there.
So do you think that we'd have to look at that, or? So, so would you recognize the bike path one?
Bike path, I mean, uh, the lift station one is, uh, that lift station over there by the school that needs to be updated. The Force Main would be the, over there, which I guess I don't remember it's on there.
Can we go back and ask them for the date, for the dates if they weren't here? Just for more clarification?
They should, they should take-
Well, I think they should start sending this every time they send the bill. So you don't, should never have to call them back. I think we should be getting this.
Yeah, so we re- we recognize the projects, but don't know unless you know what they've been asking people.
You gonna be able to see anything, John?
I mean, there's one that-
No. So what was that project engineer that, I know the park, I let him in three quarter hours? What was that one?
That's, well, that was combination of all those things. What in was the, uh?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
I have none of that information on that.
No.
No.
No, you're lying.
Just telling us.
I mean, really, I'm calling all the same by.
I think they need to clarify that, I need to invoice better.
Some, some more detail back from the-
I agree.
Let me kind of reset the expectation of what they're going to score for this, the details.
Sorry, are you, are there people that you, you, you do really be talking to?
Probably not in the near future.
One of the things they should probably know by now is that Scott Wise is a professional clerk.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even notice that.
What's that?
Scott Wise, my last.
Forty-five Scott Wise, they should know by now, a year later.
Oh, yeah, they're little.
Almost a year now.
Yes.
Thanks for following up on those.
Yeah, I'm glad too. Even though they're always telling me to hold off.
Yeah.
Well, I just think anybody that's on the bill should have some type of an explanation.
Yep.
More so than what they, I mean, they do, they do say professional services render its follows, but that's not, you know, so that's more than that.
Well, tell me that three women on here, and they don't help. Yeah, there you go. Well, or not any of those engineers, never went for engineering, so that's why we hired you.
Okay. Do you get a schedule from them as far as, like, they gotta come here, they're, uh, non-talents here? Do they get a schedule with this engineer? You know, charge dollars per hour, and this engineer, da-da-da? It would be, I had a contract that sometimes is a year.
I could look back at the Swift Gear project, but this others, these other items, they're all or all, aren't they?
And they show, they show us what rate is on each level there, but they don't tell us who, which one of those levels are going plus.
Right, that's, and where, and then other, you need, you need to get it, certainly you sign a contract, you hear?
I think of the Swift Gear, but except this other, this other one.
Yeah, so it should be a general contract, I would say, that would be. Yeah, a general contract, which generally, when you have people come on good, then you can be a schedule as to what, just like they have job description, others, small, charge dollars, it's, um, one another.
Would we have that for the capital improvements though, on all of these different points?
Yeah, it's an overall general contract for services.
Okay.
Yep.
And you're gonna pause the question? Yeah, we, we didn't know, um, right, we, you know, from the one we were talking to. Or, no. Have you ever gotten that, anything from that outfit?
Oh, David Shaw.
I think he's quite a good person, for a deputy clerk. Some of them are, um, we can, we can look at that, some others are decent. Our, our interview we had, she's definitely, um, education-wise and qualification-wise. She's, um-
Plus.
Yeah.
Very plus. So, she's got the HR behind her.
Yeah, four years of it, and she has-
So that's the, you know, big call for the office.
She understands a lot of what they were requirements, which we are failing on right now, as far as, um, employee files.
Yeah, she had all kinds of things, just said, you can't do this, you can't do that, and it takes a lot to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
I told her how many things weren't, you know, needs to be gone through, and-
And I knew that's my, my basic knowledge, and then she went on to say, well, are you doing this?
And, that's amazing.
Yeah, like, no. So I, we, we have other sort of benefit too, but I guess, I was very impressed with, with her qualifications.
I'm gonna stop down in the morning. Okay, get copies or whatever, those. Okay, right, so now, let's see, we can get some more set up for Tuesday and Thursday.
Yep. I mean, we, we have-
But we might have to set up a special meeting, cause it'd be nice to get, maybe wanna add some of those others, um, get a person in here even before Alex leaves.
Yes. Cause I think I have, um, seventeen, eighteen applications.
You're kidding, and you know, we haven't had that-
At this mission? No.
For anybody.
No, we haven't.
And this, a whole time, I mean, if we had three or, well, if we had five, we were doing good. That was it, so I'm amazed, and I don't know if it's that in you thing that's doing, but you said you've gotten it through a lot on the-
Facebook posts?
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, I said, good.
I'm glad the people are seeing.
Looking for jobs. Hopefully, Dane has a bunch of them that wanna come in here with his part-time job.
Yep.
Jobs. Yes, you never know.
Great, anything else?
I think so. I, I'm gonna miss Alex, she was a huge asset.
Yeah, she has to do. She's just a speed, speed.
Yes.
She's just a, like, nice girl.
But, do you still see her?
Yes.
Yes.
Tell him, and I know that'll be nice to be able to see her.
Where's she going?
Her partner's. And she's, and, and she's very excited, and she's very happy, and that's, that's important. And you know what, you're right, this was a lot to come out of conference and start us, yeah, I mean, even for you with a lot of background was a lot. So.
Okay. In front of a lot of topics already, but the other, the other thing I just want to mention is that, um, the Board of Adjustment had a meeting, they hadn't met for a couple few years. So our, our City Board of Adjustment is, in, in looking at our ordinances, any, any building permit that includes a variance should, needs to go in the Board of Adjustments for them to evaluate and, you know, madd on. So it was good to, to do that. Um, our Board of Adjustment will, will be on upcoming agenda item, probably, you know, closer to the first of the year, because those, you're supposed to have, you have five members. Our, our code, our plan, our planning, um, Enzoian code, calls for five of them with overlapping terms. So one of them will swap out each year. Um, it's, no, nobody is new on there, other than filling the vacant spot that never was filled up front. So they, they've all, other than Steve Nunley, have exceeded their initial five-year term, so we're gonna, I'm gonna work with them and phase in so that we can get some new people in there each year and not burn people out and things like that, so kind of re, reviewing that group so that they can help us with that expertise that they can bring to the table.
Who lives on the, um, Board of Adjustment?
Mike Obak, Bruce Billik, Steve Nunley, um, Sidney Richter, and Sean Corbin. And Mike has been the chairperson until now, but they, he wanted to, somebody else to be elected, so at this meeting, they elected Bruce Billik as the next chairperson. And that will, theoretically, that'll probably be under the election each year.
That's the Board of Adjustments.
That's the Board of Adjustments, yep. The other thing that our, our code calls for is to have a zoning and planning commission, which we don't have, a separate one goes, I don't know that we ever have, I think everybody looks to Board of Adjustments, just trying to look for those. Theoretically, they're different, they have different responsibilities.
But it's nice to have.
Yep, so we'll look, then look at that as well, so some additional things to work on, come up with. Try to streamline some things.
Yeah, it sounds like we'll.
Steve. Okay. City council, any council members have any more comments, topics?
I just got one thing, and, and maybe we can, and maybe we can't do this, but with the financials that we get, it'd be possible to take this month, for example, that we would be approving the month prior, so that we have time to take these with us, and they actually really do, and understand what's going on. You understand what I'm saying?
Get, get a little bit more of the details, like, what, what would you like to see and what's your timeline?
Well, first of all, I, I would appreciate, like, last council meeting, you know, saying, I don't know what I'm making this look like, financials.
Oh, that's what you.
Great, we charged you your court, though.
Yeah, we just had. I was, you know, it's difficult to sit down here, wouldn't you have ten pieces of paper? Which I understand that, but ten pieces of paper to look at, so I was thinking that we could use the financials that way, we would help me out, I guess, to better understand what the accounts are, where they're going, and that type of thing.
See, with the financials earlier than what you're getting them?
Right.
Okay.
Are you able to, with your bills and time?
We got, well, are you talking claims or the treasure report and that kind of stuff?
Yes, every day.
Well, with claims, we.
Maybe if you give you, but that's not, that's not a problem, what I'm concerned about is all the runs and where, you know, things are changed off, charged off to the, the different categories and that type of thing.
Margin of treasures.
I mean, it's hard, when we've got ten pieces of paper that we need to work through, and it comes to me, and some people, some of those are financials, so. And maybe nobody else is having that issue.
Well, I, I mean, Miranda's here Friday, and we didn't get them completed even Friday, so, um, she sent the letter explaining the financials, so.
And I understand that, that's what we could theoretically do, we probably can't get them done sooner, but we wouldn't have to approve them tonight. We could give them now and at the next meeting.
Okay, definitely, maybe, because we told her not to have to do them until the second meeting.
So that's what, and that's what this is, the second meeting, yeah.
Right, and you're talking more, it's time to evaluate, understand them before. So still get them at the same time, but have them on the following.
Following, right.
Is that?
It's.
Is there anything that stands?
I don't, I don't think, like, where it's covered, their reviews don't, there's not a specific requirement of when the council approves financials, is that?
I don't, I don't, for a, a specific requirement, we have to get sugar in that, in a packet once a month.
Right, you could, you could still have them out just like now.
But if there's anything pressing, you could bring that to our attention, that we gotta, that we approve or something, yes.
I don't have a problem doing that, I mean, as long as, I mean, I, I wait for a callback from, from Justin Jacobs, who I've been wanting to company, I can run by them, but I don't have a problem with that.
Well, to me, that would be very.
Easier, yeah.
Yeah. Items? Let's see, committee reports. Got to look for anything new. Departments, place, current place.
Hope coming on Friday. I'm pretty well, sorry, a little late because it was so far in the distance, so, well, I think it was mainly, they cleaned up, probably did things a little with what they did with the kids and stuff, and that's kind of what's going to take it down, is like, they had all the kids up there, just and they had that whole bus, you know, real afterwards, taking a lot of, like. Otherwise, it went fairly well, and then we, thanks to Kelly and his crew, we got cones and police teams, or fire teams and myself. We got cones set up all on the two blocks on the east side, uh, on the football field there, which is greatly improved traffic flow and not lowering the sucker factor on whether you're gonna scrape a vehicle or have a disaster.
You didn't have anyone parking there just because?
We had one.
Of course.
But, uh, we got, we got it there, so. I don't know if the fire team will at any point approach you, but the thought occurred to me, maybe we need to look at, make some kind of a permanent thing, like, grab a parking along there, you know, even, even if it's just, you know, like a timeframe, kind of like the rest of the school streets there, you know, like maybe Fridays, five to ten p.m. or whatever, although, like, then I got to thinking, well, then what about other events and stuff, so maybe it'd be better to just do a permanent, I don't know, but. Like I say, I don't, if I know Brian, well, very likely, having seen how well that went, maybe he's talking about to you guys, whether or not that'd be a possibility, and I would certainly say, uh, what I saw, I would not be an unwilling person.
So we just gotta get people to read the signs as it's coming in.
Right. Use your glasses. Get a, tick it a couple times, that would be.
Something on the burger leaves, what's going on there?
Have it, we've got a couple of leaves, you know, people turn stuff in, but nothing, no way to use.
Think they're bad anymore, or?
I'm curious, who sets the price for parking tickets?
You guys, I guess.
Yeah, it's ten dollars. For a parking fare?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I need to be more than. I was gonna say. I don't see much, very much.
Ten dollars.
All right, next agenda.
They're gonna say, don't buy us a new car.
Back in the day, well, it turns out, we probably weren't supposed to, back in the day, the PVs could send them all to the clerk of court and just, and on this, the way it was set up, they, the net cost was actually like fifteen and change, and then somebody figured out, well, yeah, actually, first, city parking ordinances are not supposed to go through the clerk of court unless, unless they don't get paid, the city turn the files and blah, blah, blah. So, so, yeah, and, you know, we're, and the code of ordinances is like, it's other ten bucks. I, I was, I was gonna say, so, since we can't send them through the clerk of court using the electronic systems, I, I do it on the computer, but transferring and filling in all the data, I mean, it's a fifteen minute process, so it wouldn't make sense to charge.
Right, and then if they don't pay, and I turn it over to Tisha, or turn it over to.
Then you're, so you're up in the air for it, yeah.
I know we were talking, like, can we just send them out, too, instead of, like, sometimes you have, you put it, like, on their vehicle? But there was one that was a, that was a trailer?
Right.
And what if it was away, or, I, I don't know.
Well, usually, I mean, if it's, if it's a non-attached trailer, if you will, tape it to somewhere near the village. If it's, if it's an attached trailer, we put it under white chrome vehicles.
Well, did you check with the neighboring towns, what their typically rates are?
Okay, um, you've suddenly tickled in my brain, might need to look in Iowa code, I don't know if Ohio code specifies what the city can charge on that.
Okay.
Maybe I'll check that.
Maybe, or call state. Yeah, because when is our, are no parking on streets? When does that start?
November.
November.
November, yeah.
Was it November and March?
End of March. Got to be in your email from, was it from Alex or from you today on the newsletter? Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. A second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was, say aye? Here.
I have just, I have to go pick up. And who was the, uh, sorry, who traveled yesterday? Uh, oh, so who was that?
Uh, it was Carly, with Hit Stop.
Oh, it was them, okay. I didn't, and I kind of looked at, and we didn't get home till like five thirty or something.